Call this ready, schedule meeting in order, please call roll.
Eric Querom.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Mabry.
Here.
Commissioner Fabia.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Please stand to right, please. .................................... Do we have any public comments? We'll go to, uh, just, uh, just state your name for the record.
My name is Lou Maxwell. I'm a citizen here of Princeton, very proud to be here. I'm here, uh, for three things. I want to say first that I appreciate very much, uh, the service that they provided on Zerring Road, the entrance to Coeeta Court. There are two hundred of us that live in that cul-de-sac. And there was work that had to be done. And, uh, the entrance was really needed, an awful lot of work. And I came in, uh, talked to the mayor, and he put everything in second gear and got it done quicker, and I appreciate that very much. Pete Nelson was a big help, too. I thank you, too, Peter. I serve the United States Marine Corps, and I'm very proud to be living in Princeton. You have the flags around, you have the monuments, and you have the parks that are dedicated to, to veterans. And I appreciate that also very, very much. I thank you for doing that. Uh, my third reason for being here is the Miller Park north of town. My daughter has a store very close by, and, uh, I just want to kind of keep an eye on that park. And actually, it's looking better already from what they've done, and they've really, all they've done is cleared the land, and it's looking better already. So that's my main reason for being here. And I understand that if we can't make any comments until the end of this meeting, uh, I request if, once the presentation is made, uh, by, is it Laura?
Morning.
Uh, if we could have a few minutes, if we have any questions that we could ask some, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other votes, however? Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Newman for the approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the regular council meeting on Monday, November second.
I will second.
Motion's been second. Any corrections? Good call, roll.
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to invoices, and we will start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have the invoices for Public Affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances. Plan Department, nine thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Administration's ten thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. No expenses for self-insurance or economic development. Tourism, fifty, one, one thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars and seven cents. Property Department is seventeen thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. No expenses for community development. General obligation, three hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. Incremental financing, one hundred one thousand seventy-eight dollars. For total invoices for Public Affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances, a five hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents. Mayor, I have examined these bills, find them to be true and correct, and move that they be paid.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments or corrections? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I have the bills and payrolls for Department Streets and Public Improvement that as follows. The Street Department, a total of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-two cents. Waste water collection, ninety-six thousand one hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Waste water treatment, fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Waste water administration, eighty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Cemetery department, eight thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Garbage expenditures of twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-four cents. For grand total of two hundred and sixty-two thousand sixty-eight dollars and eight cents. Mayor Querom, I have examined the bills and payrolls, find them to be true and correct, and request payment be made.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments or corrections? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go through, Mr. Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have bills for public health, safety, and civil society. For the police department, I have fifty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and forty cents. For fire and ambulance department, I have fifty-four thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars eighty-five cents. For a total of one hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. I have reviewed these bills. I believe they are to be extremely accurate, and I move they be paid.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments or corrections? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. I have the bills and payroll of public property utilities. Electric generation totals, five hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred five dollars and forty-six cents. Electric distribution of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-six cents. Electric administration of four hundred four thousand two hundred sixty-three dollars and nine cents. Telecommunications of one thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-five cents. Water treatment of thirty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and fifteen cents. Water distribution of eleven thousand one hundred, one, eleven thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and nineteen cents. And water administration of one hundred nineteen thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. For a grand total of one day, one hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. I've examined these bills. Those will be true and correct, and move that we pay them.
I'll second that. Motion's been second. Any comments or corrections? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Now we'll go to the regular business. We're going to start tonight with, uh, an update from Lori Benucci on the Darius Miller Park renovation project. Just need your name.
Lori, would you mind flipping the switch on the front before you?
Good evening, everyone. Lori Benucci up here talking about Darius Miller Park. Before I get started, though, I'd like to have a shout-out to the Princeton High School Tiger Football Team on a fantastic year.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lasting one of their best records in school history. I don't know if anyone in this room is currently involved, either with somebody in your family or some kind of coaching or volunteer effort, but we've all been touched by the high school, and our kids have been involved in it, and it's just a really incredible thing for our community. They've worked really hard. That was great. Great season. Um, before I get started on what we're doing, I'd like to go through, again, the members of the committee. So, uh, if you're not familiar with them, um, the first one, I'd like myself, Sue Shetsky. I'd like to recommend Ann Prossby. Kate Kirschman's on the committee. Uh, we've also got, um, Mike Taylor, um, Mike Went, Michael Went, Dave Hornbaker, Al Taylor, Cliff Cartwright, Steve Keister. Jerry has been coming as a representative from the council, and Pete is always steadfast in our record keeper. So, it's a great committee. We've got kind of a broad spectrum of people from the community, and, um, everybody brings different skill sets to the table. I'm a master gardener, and I think that's why I was asked to be involved, and happy to be on this committee. Um, his brief history of Darius Miller Park, um, you guys might know this. I really didn't, and so, uh, I was interested to find out that Darius Miller was the president of the railroad, Chicago Quincy Railroad, which is now the Burlington Northern Santa Fe. But he was a graduate of, he went, he attended Princeton High School, and then left and got involved in the railroad, worked his way up, became president. He died in nineteen fourteen at the age of fifty-four of a Pennsylites attack in Glacier National Park, I believe. But, um, so he was very prominent in the railroad, and upon his passing, the railroad shortly thereafter gave, donated that piece of land that is the park of Darius Miller City. So, um, it was named Darius Miller Park, and fast forward to seventy-six, there was a renovation. Um, a fine job was done in the spirit of seventy-six, I would say, maybe architecturally, and there is a time capsule there. But, um, now, since then, I think in the last two or three years, there were many efforts of considering redesigning the park. But, uh, right now, we're, we're going to accomplish this, and take all those things into consideration, look at the work that's been done design-wise, and move forward within our budget. So, um, the committee's been meeting, uh, every other week since September, and what we've done at the first, uh, I think, these last couple months, is talk about ideas. The first meeting was fantastic, because we all talked about a thousand things that we wanted in this park. We had drive-parks, we had, you know, kids' splash pads, we had just kind of, we're spit flying on all the things that might make a good park. We have winnowed down that list considerably to be realistic and also take some design elements into consideration. A lot of those things were great ideas and should maybe be incorporated into other parks in this community, but, um, but now the committee sees that, um, what would be really relevant there would be kind of a welcoming, inviting, green space, a simple park with some historical elements to it perhaps, to kind of tie in with, uh, the neighborhood that it's in and with our, um, city and its historical pride. So, we are trying to get the best part to the budget that we've got. Um, I had a conversation with Jill McHade-Mannier, Jill Mannier-McHague, when she was home visiting David Trish, and she said, you know, there's a great train park in Phoenix, Arizona, and maybe, you know, you could do something for kids there on a train, um, theme. So, I went, uh, researched it online and found out that they do, you'd have a fantastic park, and saw some of these things with train elements for kids. So I brought that back to the committee, and we talked about it, and the committee has decided that we're going to kind of, if there is going to be a theme or focal point, it's pretty low-key, but we're going to kind of have some train components there to tie in with Darius Miller, and, um, also to kind of tie in our depot, architecturally. We're going to, um, research children's, we're going to have a little children's area with some train-themed things, and we've been doing some research online and coming up with a lot of park-like ideas for little kids. I also have had some success writing grants from the community, and I went online to the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Foundation website and found out that they do indeed give grants, uh, up to a million dollars a year in small increments to communities. And I really, I looked at their mission statement, and there was just a children's themed things and cultural things and with historical elements, and I thought, well, it really ties in with what we're trying to do as a committee. So there will be a grant written as part of this to the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Foundation for all or part of what we're going to put in the park. Um, right now, we, I broke it down into a subcommittee, and I've got a design team, and it's a great one. Um, on that design committee are Dave Hornbaker, Cliff Cartwright, Keith Keister, and Sally Ziering, who is kind of an ad hoc member. She's a recent graduate of the University of Illinois-Chicago with a design degree. They're going to take the, uh, components of the park that we would like and the ideas that we've put on paper and all, and draw it up for us preliminarily, and then we'll look at it, and we'll go back and forth probably a couple times each week, six weeks, and try, and look at the design and see if we like it. So, um, that's where we are right now. If there's any questions about anything that we're doing or comments that you'd like to make about this park.
Lou, you want to stand up?
Well, you've mentioned, uh-
Lou, do you want to, wait, you want to stand up at the microphone, please?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. All right. Now, you mentioned train components. Can you tell us something about that?
Sure. Um, really, and I can show you pictures, actually, I'm at some of these after the meeting or another time, but we, uh, we found trains, just mo, kind of like a model train, but for children, so that they, they would either be, some parks have them, and they're made out of metal and they're painted, but some parks we've seen where they're made out of wood, and they're just things for children to do. So say you're a young mother, you're at Flower House, you've got a cup of coffee, you've got two kids. If you walk over to the park and you sit on one of our benches, you're going to have a little place for your kids to, to play. Also kind of tying into the Darius Miller thing, we might have some historical, um, signage that would talk about who he is, but that's, that's all we're talking about. We're not talking about moving trains or anything like that.
Okay. Well, that's good. Uh, now, the present road structure, is that going to remain the same?
At this time, I believe that the present road structure is going to remain the same. We're not going to close the street off, yes.
Okay. That was our, our main concern, to keep that road open.
Mm-hmm.
But once parallel with the tracks.
Sure. I know what you're talking about.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we talked, thank you for your interest. Um, we talked about architectural elements, so pointed entry, which is a term that Steve Keister brought up. I had found, like, columns maybe at either end of the park, you know, just something to give it a little, uh, architectural interest. But we're going to be very conscious of how much these things cost and, um, and what we can do with what we've got, but we do want to, um, make a park that's welcoming for people when they come into the community and will also have long-lasting beauty. So, how are we doing? Good so far?
Lori, I've had a lot of positive comments so far, just by the shelter being gone and the fountain. So those two things, those being removed, really opened it up. So a lot of compliments already about what the committee's done.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you. You know, you can kind of dream big, um, if, uh, most of us haven't had a chance to get there, but there's a park in the middle called Hyde Park. It's a beautiful, huge park. It really has a lot of big trees and benches and paths, and it's a green space in an otherwise urban area, and that's something about, like, the feeling that we're trying to get up there. We're just trying, we're going to keep it simple and beautiful, and it has some green space right there between the noisy railroad train and the busy, um, area. Anything else?
You know, part of the, uh, the grand scheme, so to speak, uh, you know, we do have a budget for this that you're working with, and we're buying with the budget, we're, we're good to go. Um, when you talk about the depot and kind of bringing in the depot with, with the park, the other thing I'd like to do is, uh, is pave that parking lot at the depot. Uh, we need to do that, and I'd like to turn, you might be able to do this as an entire project up there at the north end and get it all done at once. And another thing is also to bring the period light poles that we have at the north end with the benches and bring those down to the south end. We could do that as a separate project.
That would be wonderful.
But we could do all this, I believe, with, uh, with tourism money and, uh, no cost to taxpayers, be able to stay in hotels and pay for it.
And we're talking about reusing things. The city has, I think wisely, saved a lot of the bricks from the bricks, whereas that have been taken up and, um, finished with other materials. And so, the, to, to the extent that we can, we're going to reuse these bricks in there, and I think people at Princeton will appreciate that. Um, we're talking about the possibility of, um, taking, occasionally a large tree has to be removed for lines or water or whatever and taken down. And, um, up in, um, Millennial Park in Chicago, Memorial Garden, they, they've taken a big wooden, um, tree and carved it into a bench in a children's area. So those are, you know, we're trying to think of ways that we can maybe reuse materials that we have here in town to keep costs down. Anything else, guys? And I am happy to come in monthly and give reports, just from a timeline perspective, so the design keeps working out, and then they're going to get back to us, and we're going to vote on a final design. And once we have that, then we can move forward with, um, you know, a grant committee or, you know, fundraising committee, if we, if we go beyond, um, budget, which I don't expect us to. And we're hoping, you know, to start next spring and get it, and get it done.
That's great. We might, uh, maybe a month, every month, maybe every six weeks.
Sure, I'm happy to.
Get all of them, and back in.
Just one quick comment. I want to thank you. You're doing a great job. It looks, this looks better already.
Yeah.
I think the gray system is looking better. Just by taking what was there, it's looking better already.
Yeah.
So we thank you very much.
We're on the right track. Thanks for your-
And thank the city, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, continuing, uh, with business, we'll turn to Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have ordinance, uh, zip oh, fifteen, eleven, oh, three, twenty. This is the first reading or ordinance establishing enterprise zone within the city of Princeton, Illinois. And this enterprise zone being a portion of a larger enterprise zone encompassing contiguous portions of the cities of Princeton and Spring Valley, the villages of Brandville, Henopend, La, and Mark, and the counties of Bureau and Putnam. I make a motion that we approve the first reading of this ordinance.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments? This is a, uh, this enterprise zone is our application to continue with the enterprise zone we have north of Interstate eighty. I think, uh, this expires, the enterprise zone expires two years, June seventeen. June seventeen. And all municipalities within the, uh, enterprise zone are addressing these ordinances to pass them. And that, I don't think is going to be a problem. The problem will probably come later down the road, whether or not the state wants to continue with the program, and, uh, that's the big hurdle. And, uh, I don't know where that is exactly on the horizon, but, uh, I know they're talking about it a little bit, but that, that could be an issue further down the road. Any further comment? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next up, Mayor, I've got, uh, the building report for the month of October for residential. We have ten new permits, uh, with a value of seventy-one thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars. Commercial, we have three new permits for five hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, through October two thousand fifteen, we have twelve million twenty-nine thou, thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars in, uh, permits compared to a little over four million dollars in fourteen, and five million dollars in, uh, two thousand thirteen. So we're having a good year. Sorry, I have a big issue, Commissioner Newman. Now we'll turn to, uh, Commissioner Warren.
Thank you. Now I've got ordinance oh dash fifteen dash eleven dash zero two dash thirty. The second reading authorizes purchase of used generation parts from legal world incorporated. I move that we approve this ordinance.
I'll second that. Motion's been second. Any comments? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Warren. Now we'll go to, uh, Commissioner Mabry.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening I have actually two pieces of business. First is resolution R fifteen eleven zero one eighty. It's a resolution with the state of Illinois that allows us, um, to be able to close Route twenty-six for a couple hours, uh, this Friday, is it November twenty? From four to six P.M. So I just make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. The second piece of business is, it's just a report from the Street Department that due to the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, garbage and recycling routes will be picked up as follows. Thursday, November twenty-sixth will be collected on Monday, November thirtieth, and Friday, November twenty-seventh will be collected on Tuesday, December first. Please take your garbage and recycling out by five A.M. If you have any questions, you go ahead and call the Street Department at eight seven two seven three three one. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Mabry. Now we'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
I have ordinance zero dash one five dash one one dash zero one dash five zero. An ordinance authorizing sale of personal property, the nineteen ninety-three Chevy Suburban in Colorado. This is the second and final reading, and I'd like to make a motion that we pass. Pass.
Second. Motion's been second. Any comments? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next, I have, uh, bid help, a bid tab for, uh, ambulances, the ambulance. Um, as Chuck has stated to everyone, he did not put in the graphics figure, which would increase the total one thousand to one thousand two hundred in through that area. We had two bids, Foster Coach sales, North Central Emergency Vehicles. Um, the Fire Department reviewed the bids. They feel that Foster Coach is not up to the specifications, um, that we are requiring, and they are recommending that we pass the North Central Emergency Vehicle. The difference there is one dollar. It's, uh, total bill is one thou, one hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars. I would like to make a motion that we take the recommendation of the Fire Department and pass this.
Second. Motion's been second. Comments? Could you call roll?
Commissioner Warren.
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry.
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, I've got a couple things on, uh, on my agenda, a couple announcements. First of all, Steve Wright has announced that he will be retiring, uh, from the city effective January first of twenty sixteen. Steve has been a very valuable city employee for thirty-five years, all spent with the Street Department. The last twelve and a half years, he has served as the Street Department's department head. He goes without saying that this will be a huge loss for the city. His wealth, Steve's wealth of knowledge and history and appeal will be difficult to replace. So when you see Steve out and about, please congratulate him, and more importantly, thank him for his thirty-five years of dedicated service to the city of this. Second item I have is, uh, we've recently lost a retired city employee, Don Underwood, who worked for the city for thirty-two years, passed away this past Thursday. Don was a well-known and very liked, well-liked, uh, employee of our Street Department. The city can always count on Don as reliable and accountable as they can. Our condolences go to Don's wife, Judy, and their children, uh, one of which Scott is a lieutenant, uh, of our police department.
on our police department. The last thing I got is, you know, the city's been involved with some major projects in the recent months with sewer work. We've been out of Bailey subdivision, big project on South Church Street, North Euclid, working in the alley of North Euclid replacing a sanitary sewer, and most recently out of Fox Creek, which just is now wrapping up. We've had challenges with the, with these jobs, we have worked through, we've worked through those challenges, we've had residents that have rightly been concerned with things that have been going on as far as, you know, the work goes, as you would expect in any heavy construction area, people do have concerns, and largely for the most part, residents have been very, very level-headed, they've expressed their concerns, we've addressed those concerns, we've, and we've moved on after, after taking care of those concerns. Unfortunately, we've had several, just in recent months, residences that have approached city employees on the worksite and have been name-calling and swearing and delivering tortores to city employees on the work that's been done, and there's really no call for that here in the city of Princeton. You know, we're a community, we're a small community, we're a tight-knit community. I don't want to see anybody going out and dressing down our city employees who are out there doing a job that is not only to enhance our community, but to enhance the neighborhoods in which you live. So, if anyone in the future has any, any needs, they want to yell and scream, swear, call people names, my phone number is eight one five eight seven two one nine one zero, and I would ask that they call me. Don't take it out on our city employees, they're hardworking individuals and they don't, they don't deserve that, they're, they're being told what they're, they're doing what they're being told. Address us, you know, your elected officials, and we'll, we'll address the problems. I don't want, I don't want to get angry into them, whatever, that's fine, but just be angry with me, don't be angry with our city employees. That's all that I have, so we're going to the old business.
I just have one item, I don't know if you all had a chance to read your emails today, we did get an email from a resident down East Marion Street that has some sewer backup issues, kind of tagging along to your comment there. That seems to be a real problem, Eric, for whatever reason, and I know Tim's been out there several times and all of Steve, this is not really a resident that's got this kind of problem. Both residents there have some sewer check valve, both are still experiencing backup in their basement, so we need to take a really good, hard look at, we need to get the engineers out there, I'm not sure what we need to do, quite frankly, but we need to find a solution for these, this problem.
Yeah, totally agree. It's, it's a problem that we have to address there especially, but in other areas of town as well, so it's, it's going to be a very long challenge, but we'll get there. Any other old business?
I have one, Eric, I just wanted to thank the city council for a decision we made back in July, and that decision we made in July was to reject the early retirement incentive program. We've had five employees that are retired, these are senior employees, and we have another two senior employees that are going to be retiring in January the first of the year, so seven employees between the city and the hospital. And had we accepted and adopted the early retirement incentive program, the city would be responsible for nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars of incentive paid to these folks. So, I thank the council, we thought about this decision warm and hard, we had spirited discussion, and I'm proud we made the decision that we did. Any other old business?
Yes, I was wondering if I could be upstayed on this manhole that just came to light two weeks ago, it's called South Church.
Actually, maybe we could bring it to you, the manhole over on South Church Street?
Yeah.
Can you come up and just tell us, this is something that came to us late, I think we kind of addressed it a couple of months ago, realized that we're going to, well, why don't you explain what we found and what happened?
What was, it was brought to my attention after the project was put into place for South Church Street to have the rehab of the sanitary sewer down there. I was told about, I wasn't aware at the time, that a little extension that came up with South Church before you get back in that little dead end, there's a sanitary sewer and a water line that run in the same manhole, which is not safe, could be a problem, it could be, you know, you don't know EPA ties illegal if they're allowed down there. So, we decided at that time, since the project was going forward and the roads were going to be tore up down there, the construction zone where the trucks were driving around, tore that road up, the road is going to have to be replaced, that's the time to address that issue, let's correct it, move the sanitary sewer away from the water, you need, you know, your separation to be legal with the only EPA, so that's why we made the decision, let's address it now. We had the contractor who was on site doing that job, it was a price, the price came out very high, what we considered very high. So, I spoke with Ray about this, and Ray asked me to get a couple more quotes and bids on this, and I did, I only had one person return the bid, came back significantly lower than the first contractor, and we decided that they would, you know, go forward with the work and finish this up for us. It wasn't the contractor that was doing the job, at the time it was a different contractor, so we kind of allowed the other contractor to come in, do their work, and then they came in afterwards to finish this job, to make it correct and safe for us.
And what was, do you remember how much the final bid was?
I, I want to say, I don't have exact numbers, but it was around eight to ten thousand dollars. The original bid was significantly higher than that.
That was by, again, the contractor that was doing the work was the high one, was the one that was going out?
Yes, and we got a cheaper price as well because this contractor that got the second part of this was in town doing some boring work in Bailey, so they were able to, they had equipment already here, they said we could do it a lot cheaper because we're already mobilized here in town, so.
And what was the company?
Superior Construction is the one that did the work for us.
Is it finished now?
It is complete, yes.
When did they complete?
Has it been a week? I, I don't know exactly, it's been at least, it's been over a week.
Well, I know Rachel and I had a discussion about this, because this case completely surprised me that this manhole was missed, number one, and I guess even more disappointing to me is that, that's the first I heard of it, I didn't know we'd missed about an extra eight or ten thousand dollars for a manhole, I had no idea that we needed out there. So, my question to Rachel and to the rest of the folks was, you know, did the engineering company, did Flatt miss this? Did Gensini, Flatt didn't do the work that he's supposed to do, you know, why did we miss that manhole? I mean, that's a significant cost.
To be honest, I don't, I can't answer that. Gensini did not miss it, so there's no blame on them.
So, it wasn't on the original drawings?
It was not on the original drawings, no, and...
And that was done by Willa Hoffman?
No, that one was done by Strand Associates out of Joliet.
So, do we have recourse to go back to Strand and say, you know, you missed this, this was something that you should have done, this is what we paid you folks to do, and now we're incurring extra costs because you blew it?
One of the things that was frustrating in two thousand fifteen was that there was five different engineering companies doing sewer work, so Tim had five different engineering companies from Joliet, South Peru, Dixon, yeah, Bloomington, five different companies they had to keep track of on five different projects, and we need to work in two thousand sixteen to riddle down to one or two engineering companies. There's a lot more ownership if we just use one or two, works both ways, instead of having, it was a real disaster having too many, and we'd have reduced Strand, and I think overall we would, you know, as well as, this again is the learning curve, so I'm not going to say any ill about the company, but I just say we, we learned, so.
But the thing, that's something where I think we need to call on, and see if we can somehow recoup some of those that caused a lot, lot of damage. Do you know, did Chandler and Associates, did they engineer that originally a long time ago? Maybe probably five, seven years ago?
I have no, they've done some storm work, storm sewer work down there, I don't know sanitary for sure.
That might be something to check into, that they may have it on their drawings.
It's possible, I don't know.
Well, it's definitely something worth looking into, and I think that what we need to do is contact them and bring it to their attention, see where it goes from there, because it is a, you know, we're six months away from a new budget year, so, you know, if we run into more problems like this, and we're going to have to come up with, maybe with the money to pay for it, so maybe we can, we can put it on someone else to make up for a mistake or something that was missed, we need to, we need to do that, so.
Yeah, we acknowledge that, you know, things happen out of the field, but for them, if it's Flatt missed a manhole, I mean, that's, that's pretty serious.
And I wonder, would it be something that they would have, because you go back to Church Street, I know that new sanitary that was put in the yard east of Ray Swanson, I mean, would they have, I would assume that that would be something they're still looking at, would be that manhole, even though it's on that little joint that goes in the back there, it's not something that would...
The stuff would have fouled, at least at this gate where that goes for those now. They should, when they, when they shoot elevations and rim height and all that, they should be popping manholes, seeing anything that's coming in directions where all the pipes are coming from.
Okay.
And was this discovered when you dug it up to do sanitary work down there?
I discovered, I found out where it ran, as it was dug up, yes. I was, I didn't know exactly where that ran because there's not another manhole to say that it ties into, it's laterals that are coming through into a water, more or less like a water manhole, and that's how I was, became aware of what was going on there, so once we figure that out, we've got an open sewer line, a water line, that's, it has to be fixed, you know, and that's why Steve and I talked about it and said, "We've got to do it now," you know, unfortunately, it was something that was missed and, you know...
Anything else?
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Any more old business?
New business, maybe new business. As Laurie stole my thunder, because I do want to congratulate the football team on a very successful season, and it's really great that the entire town rallies around something like that, it's just unfortunate that we can't always have that eastward to hide with everything we do, we're trying. Yeah, a lot of fun. Any public comments?
Yeah, I wanted to thank the Street Department for your comments, you know, when you and I were talking earlier about Colletta Court, I kept saying Upton, and I should have said Church Street, that's the, that's the street I really meant.
I knew where you're talking about.
Now, where Thompson crosses over Church Street, that's where the manhole cover is, and I go, I go over that two or three times a day because I'm going around and over to Colletta Court. Now, that, we're starting to get some big potholes now right on the north and south side of that sewer cover. Is there something we could put, a temporary or something to fill that in?
The contractor has told us that he will come back and pave that road before winter.
And you're talking about the pothole that's on Thompson Street as you go past Church? Yeah, I hit that thing all the time, too. We built it in, we have built that in a couple of times, but it just keeps washing out, so it just doesn't, it doesn't stick, so...
Yeah, it's always blacked out.
The only way you should be crossing that intersection if you're heading east or west is coming on the north end of that pothole and course.
Actually, we probably should put a, a couple of cones up there, I mean, people, you know, we put a, we put a pump out there, it takes up three quarters of the intersection, and we put a cone out there, that only takes, it's only cutting out there by about ten feet, so maybe we can do that.
Do we know how much longer Church Street is going to be under construction?
I think they're done working on Church Street for this year, and we're going to be, that's going to be rebuilt, I'm hoping it'll be rebuilt next year, yeah, which, which will, is supposed to include gutters and curbs, Street, New Street and sidewalk.
Well, if anybody lives on Church Street south, my heart goes out to them, that's been a, that's been a real undescribable, really.
Yeah, any, any job like that is, is just, it's just a mess, actually, we'll have to put up with stuff that...
All right, I want to thank all of you again, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, correct me? Okay, I would like to make a motion to adjourn to the next regular meeting on Monday, December seventh, seven P.M., at City Hall.
Call roll.
Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Mabry, Commissioner Fabia, Commissioner Newman, Mayor Querom.
Hi. This meeting is adjourned.